Madam Chair, Chancellor, the recordings have started already. Let me know when you're ready to begin.
Link, we just want to make sure that we have form. Is there a way that we can see online our trustee, one of the members?
Madam Chair, right now you have, we've got trustee Sullivan, trustee Wilson, trustee Murillo, and trustee Pierce in remote. So they are online and in right now.
Link, is there a way for us to see them?
Only if they turn their video on, Chair. I have just sent a message to ask the two that have their video off to turn their video on.
Mine is on, yeah. Mike Sullivan here, video's on, but I see the PowerPoint slide up on the screen. There you go.
Okay, at the podium, would you please expand out the video to be more options, or Nicole, if you could pin them to the front screens, please?
I couldn't hear what he was saying.
I'm sorry, I just, we're moving them up to the front window right now. I'm trying to get the podium to add more than just the two.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So it is 5:02 PM, and I call this meeting order. Just to make sure that we do have form, because we have some of our members online, I just want to make sure that everyone knows who's present. So a roll call, trustee Kane.
I'm here.
Trustee Maria.
Here.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Pierce.
Here.
Trustee Wilson.
Here.
Trustee Sullivan.
Present.
Thank you. Trustee vote. And trustee Stoma. Thank you, we do have forum. If you could please say the pledge of allegiance, just follow me. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Dr. Head, has a proper meeting notice been properly posted and certified?
Yes, I certified it. It was posted in accordance with the law.
Thank you. We don't have any closed session today. Our next item is public comment. Desiree, do we have any public comment today?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have three scheduled for public comment. Two are on the Zoom, so they will be brought forward as panelists when they're called. Link, if you would bring forward Misty Kishnik, please.
I'm here if you guys are ready for me.
Yes ma'am, we are.
Okay, sorry, I thought I was gonna see something visual. Good evening, Board of Trustees, I want to let you guys know I'm not as official as I would be if I were in a board meeting. I'm volunteering with our current school board member, members at a sorry, sports games, anyway. But I'll let you know, I'm speaking on behalf of my son, Michael Moats. I was present to listen to the last meeting, and I have been walking along the way with him during this process. To start, I never in his entire education have had to file due process, have had to fight anyone to get reasonable accommodations. I felt like we were making some progress, but quite frankly, the attorney who's handled this, Mr. Quizzata, I believe it's how you say it, has been really disappointing, and in my opinion, personal opinion, sort of wasted some of your attorney fees. So I think you're familiar with the situation, but basically enrolled in two classes, and in one class, he never started the class. He immediately started conversation with his professor, who has a full-time job and is not available by phone, and she checks email once a day. So each piece of conversation took an entire day, so it didn't move very quickly to begin with. The issue is that, one, he has a 504 that states, he's got asthma, ADD, and generally, he doesn't need to take a break for, say, asthma, but he certainly does view away from the screen at times. So it was immediately an issue. He didn't start the class in hopes that he could drop that class, because he was doing very well in the other class, just drop that class and have it taken off his record, not just drop it and showing a drop, because he's working on his doctorate, and frankly, has never had a situation. So he's got an extremely good record up to this point, and great grades, and I'm super proud of him. It took longer and longer. He consulted with some different people. The solution ended up being, after talking to your disability department and legal and all of that, was that he could So the issue is that anytime that you take an exam, you have to be present in front of a camera. You have to look around your room first on camera, and I understand in today's age, we have to watch for cheating. You have to go around your room, and then you have to sit without taking your eyes off of the computer to take your exam. So as a person without a disability, that would be quite challenging for me. But here nor there, that was not going to be possible for him. So lots of time has gone on by now. Now he can't enroll from the class, but the the solution was that he could go to a testing center. Okay, that's fine, except for he was going to be required to pay to, to use that facility. Accommodations are put into place to ensure students with disabilities have a similar opportunity to benefit from the educational system as those without a disability. In my son's case, it seems that instead of seeking to understand the need for certain accommodations, they were instead questioned as if the disability itself were not valid. In fact, for that accommodation I just spoke about, he was expected to pay around $100 for each exam, and that's not a reasonable accommodation for him. It is not equal to what the other students are, they're not paying for their exam. So it became, it just was not going to be feasible. Once the attorney got involved, I was frankly floored by many of his email. According to him, we're up to, he's up to like $35,000, $40,000 of fees. And one, one, I'm gonna touch on two email. One of them is, he suggested that my son, he asked him had he been in contact with Rudy Giuliani, and, gosh, I can't think of it offhand, but a public, I mean, a political. And that one is totally inappropriate, absolutely inappropriate, from your attorney, your counsel. He continued, he came up with this, an agreement, my son signed the first piece of it, and that was that he would be reimbursed for both of his classes that he was enrolled in, that they would drop the class that this had all gone on in place, and that it would not show on his record. The second piece of it was contingent upon finishing the other class. He finished the other class, he received a 79.3, and was working with his professor on that, found out that he did, they did round it up to a B, and he had been discussing with the attorney, so he did not sign it. He had until the 31st. He did not sign the agreement on the 26th, that was demanded by the attorney, even though he had until the 31st, demanded by the attorney to be signed by 2 o'clock that day. He was taking my mother to a doctor's appointment, and was not in a place that he could have even signed it if he wanted to. That's unacceptable, to begin with, with the date issue. The second piece is that the attorney's trying to say that he was using a grade as a reason to not sign it or sign it. My son earned the grade. The professor said, "Your final grade is a B", and we were good with that. Well, the attorney was unwilling to put that in writing, and frankly, the attorney up until this point has not been very reliable or trustworthy. So we asked for it to be put in writing. He refused, said it needed to be signed that day on the 26th by two, and it, that didn't happen. So it's continued to go forward, and 35,000 to 40,000 is an awful lot of money for an attorney, and I've gone through all of the information. I can tell you, he is definitely not educated on ADA and 504 or anything, IEPs, any like, anything like that, just simply because of the comments that he's continued to make on it. He filed a tiara, because Michael had contacted the board via their, I believe their personal emails. The college would not give him the professional email. And it was a 75-page document. Out of those 75 pages, there were 36 pages that were, one, completely irrelevant to anything that's going on. It's pulled up past conservative views that my son has had online. It dug up something that, it just was really trashing and retaliating against my son. Well, the tiara was not put through all 100%, she put through part of it. Well, as soon as that happened, this is now all in one document, for, you know, anyone that looks it up can just get it all right there on one. I have to challenge you on, not you, the attorney, on how much time he spent gathering this information for this 36 pages. It had to have taken quite a bit of that $35,000. He does not seem to be wanting to resolve this issue, and currently, we've not I personally haven't gotten involved with filing due process or any of that. Again, haven't ever had to do it before, but I'm very educated on how to do it. This needs to be resolved.
I'm sorry, disrespectful, but I think you have one more minute left.
Okay. We would like to go by the original agreement, which is, he never worked in that class, so he didn't do poorly, as stated. We would like for him to be able to drop that class, because they weren't meeting or even discussing his accommodations, for it to be taken off his record completely and reimbursed. He never participated in it, and because the professor was unavailable, couldn't really move it along fast enough to do it even before he couldn't drop the class. Be guaranteed that his grade is not going to be changed as retaliation or anything else. The professor has emailed that that is his final grade, and we'd like to move forward. This needs to be taken care of pretty quickly. We have spoken to counsel. It's just not unreasonable what he asked for in the beginning, and your attorney's taking up a lot of money and a lot of time, and making some really bad statements that could end up putting things in a bad light.
Thank you ma'am, thank you so much. We're, thank you for sharing your concerns, and, you know, and the issues up behalf of your son. We'll definitely look into this, so thank you so much for making time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have one additional on Zoom. Michael Moats, Link, if you will promote Michael Moats to a panelist, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, we can.
Okay, perfect. So, okay.
Just as a reminder, you just, we, you have five minutes.
Okay, I understand.
I'll let you know when your time is up, but that's okay.
That's perfectly fine. So I do want to clarify a couple of things. Obviously, you guys just heard from my mom. You know, I have been willing to sign the agreement that was initially proposed to me, which I did sign, and Dr. Head signed as well. And I am willing to sign the supplemental agreement. What I was not willing to do was to try to figure out a way in which I am working during the day to do various tasks, school stuff, taking, you know, family members to the doctors, whatever that may be. I was not willing to try and sign that with 45 minutes' notice, especially given the fact that I didn't have time to review all of the facts. The original agreement signed by Dr. Head said I had until the 31st. You can't just come on the 26th and say, "You now have 45 minutes to sign it." That's, that's just not how contracts work. And frankly, they don't know what I would have done between the 26th and the 31st, and so, you know, you can't argue that I wouldn't have signed it. Yeah, I mean, you don't know what would have happened. We're talking about the future. So that, I just want to clarify really quick. And I'm still willing to sign that agreement, to be clear. The only thing I would ask is that the dates are updated, obviously, with the new dates that it would be signed. But, okay, so I just want to go on record, obviously, like she said, you know, we're talking about $35,000, $40,000 in litigation costs. 36 pages were trashing, degrading, humiliating, and abusive stuff that were not relevant to a breach of contract case. There is no reason for an attorney to go on Google and try to find information that puts me in a negative light whenever, you know, it has nothing to do with the breach of contract. Furthermore, if he was trying to paint a picture of me, he should have said interviewed the Vice President of the United States, interviewed the Secretary of Defense, worked in the White House as a journalist, you know, doctoral student at another university. That would have been a fair picture. But he didn't try to do that. He tried to paint me in a negative life in order to be abusive and retaliate against me. I want to go on record that also, one of your attorneys in the General Counsel's office has given me legal advice, and misled me that she was an advocate for me, rather than an attorney seeking to get information for her client. When you offer legal advice and you represent the opposing counsel, it creates a confusion, and it did for me, of what her actual motives are. And so that's going to be something that has to do with sanctions and, you know, other stuff as well. I looked at lawsuits again, Lone Star College. You have multiple on race, disability, civil rights, due process, employment. I mean, there, there, I found over 15 lawsuits in the last, you know, couple of years, that, you know, frankly, that's just sad, that there are so many individuals that are coming forward to, to say this. And, you know, it's the modus operandi of the college to engage in a settlement agreement to try to cover up their wrongdoing. I did some research in relation to the lawsuits filed against you guys versus other college district systems in Texas. You have 42% more litigation than the majority of the college I surveyed. I surveyed five, and you had more than three, of three of those systems, you had more litigation. You also attempt to hide things that are requested through the Public Information Act that are directly regarding disability discrimination. You've attempted to block things such as EEOC records regarding, you know, discrimination, you know, employment training, records, and settlement agreements. You guys try to hide it from the public, because you know that if it was
Yes sir, good afternoon.
If, what?
Well, thank you. My golly, appreciate that.
Excuse me?
Go ahead.
Okay. If, you know, frankly, if that got out and it was exposed, you know, it would not look good on the college. So what I'm getting at is that I am here, ready to sign the agreement that was, this supplemental agreement that was, that was offered to me. I am not going to pay Lone Star College for $35,000 in attorney's fees, when the majority of that time has been him disrespecting, abusing, and trashing me in court and through email. But I am ready to sign the agreement right now, and I am willing to do that. The problem is, Lone Star now wants me to pay, you know, whatever it is, 20 grand or whatever for attorney's fees. I'm not gonna pay him to trash me for irrelevant information, irrelevant information in a in litigation. So, you know, I, I think that this has to, you know, be looked at. I think that, you know, trying to shorten an agreement that's supposed to be up until the 31st, having me sign it on the 26th, giving me less than an hour's notice is unreasonable. And so, you know, you guys have now sued me for breach of contract, but
Yeah, I'm afraid your time is up, but thank you so, thank you so much for letting us know, and for making time to express your, your concerns with us in public. Thank you so much. Desiree, do we have another guest?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have one final speaker who is with us in the room today, John Bergduff. If you would approach the podium, please. You'll have five minutes, sir.
Hello, John, thank you.
Hello, hello. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me all right? Okay. Let's try to bend forward a little closer. Okay, hello. I am Dr. John Bergduff, President of AFT Lone Star College. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. It is nice to be here in person, and to see many of you face to face. For the last 18 months, it has truly been a blessing to have technology available so that we could continue to do our work remotely, and so that our students could continue to learn and not have to put their dreams on hold. However, we humans are social animals by nature, and whether it's students in a class or colleagues in a meeting, sometimes we just do better when we are actually together. We can see those subtle visual cues that are hard to see on a screen. For example, when a student doesn't understand, or a colleague is feeling frustrated. So it is a good thing that we are cautiously beginning to come back together. We are not all the way back yet. We won't be all the way back until we can shake hands and pat each other on the back, or give each other a hug. I don't know about you, but there have been times in these last 18 months when I could really have used a hug. That's not safe yet. It is frustrating and sad that we are not as far along in our recovery process as we'd hoped to be by now. The Delta variant has thrown us back into another surge, and now there is a Mu variant too. Our plans have to, have had to pause. The union is grateful for the chancellor's decision announced yesterday that the process of bringing employees fully back on campus will be paused until October to see where the variants will lead us. Class sizes are being kept smaller than usual. Offices are being reconfigured for more social distancing. Public spaces are being fitted with plexiglass barriers to keep our interactions safe. The AFT is grateful for all of these measures. We are also grateful for the consistent safety advice we have heard from the administration. First, get vaccinated. Very few people who get vaccinated get sick. Almost none of them die. Vaccines are safe. Vaccines work. Second, wear a mask. Masks are how we protect our students and colleagues who can't get vaccines. Masks are how we protect our children. It is sad that the governor of Texas has taken away from county, city, and school authorities the right to make decisions about masks and vaccines based on local circumstances. This decision hampers our ability to fully come back together safely. The chancellor and administration of Lone Star College have done all that they can to limit the spread of the disease while staying within the confines of the governor's edict. Safe behaviors are encouraged, and tangible steps are taken to make those behaviors practical, but no one is mandated to do the right thing. It is interesting to note that some schools are going further. It is well-known that Houston Independent School District decided to impose a mask mandate despite the governor's order. Once they took that step, other smaller districts have followed suit. So far, the courts in Texas have ruled in favor of the schools, at, at least for now. Did you know that at least one of our peer community colleges has decided to take a stand on masks as well? Last month, Austin Community College implemented a mandate that anyone over the age of two on college property must wear a mask. In addition, COVID testing is available on campus at various times through the week, and some of the campuses are set up as vaccination venues. It was their judgment that protecting students and faculty warranted going against the governor's order. Whatever one's initial reaction to ACC's decision might be, as we continue to monitor the progress of COVID, and think about what steps are needed to help keep Lone Star safe, it is worth taking note that a precedent has been set for taking this very bold step. Earlier this week, I had the great privilege of being invited by a friend to attend Rosh Hashanah services at one of the synagogues in my neighborhood. The rabbi in his sermon spoke about vaccines and masks as the way our community gets beyond this pandemic. He also noted that turning masks into a culture war is not helping, and he urged his congregation to not pass judgment on the motives of those who don't want to wear them. Insulting someone will never persuade them. This is solid advice on which to end this talk. Whether we are talking to colleagues, our students, or even if we have the chance to talk to the governor, let us be courageous enough to explain and defend the science, and bold enough to make decisions when needed to protect each other, but loving enough to embrace those who don't agree, metaphorically, of course. We will only get through this pandemic if we do it together, so our common bonds of affection must not be broken. Thank you so much for your kind attention.
Thank you, John, so much.
Madam Chair, that's the end of our public comment. Thank you.
Do we have any special introductions or guests, recognitions?
None today, okay.
Okay. Board members, our next item is approval of the minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to look at the minutes? So may I have a motion and a second to approve the August 5 regular meeting minutes?
Motion Sullivan.
Can I have a second?
Just, just as a reminder, trustees, in order for you to cast a vote, I would need, you would need to have your camera, I guess, face open.
Right, you'll need to have your camera turned on so we can see, see you in order for your vote to be counted.
Thank you. Do we, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so it's properly moved in second. All those
Okay, so it's properly moved in second. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
And you'll put- Right, motion passes. Thank you. Any, our next item is special reports and announcements, Chancellor?
Yeah, I have a couple of updates. So on the enrollment for this spring, it's actually pretty good news, I think. We are down about one percent in headcount, one percent in headcount down. We budgeted for zero, by the way, zero growth. And we're down two point five in credit hours. So based on my, uh, informal polling of the area colleges, we've, we've done better than any college that I've talked to so far. But, um, and I'll talk to you about the financial implications of that in just a minute. Just in the growth period, I wanted to recognize a couple of the, Houston North grew fourteen percent in headcount. So a lot of hard work went there. Montgomery grew slightly, uh, Kingwood, Tomball grew slightly. North Harris was down one point four, but that's a remarkable turnaround from what we've been seeing at North Harris. So congratulations to, uh, Dr. Blanson. U P was down three percent and Sci Fair was down four percent. So again, overall, we were down one percent in headcount, two point five in credit hours. And the credit hours translate into tuition and fees. So roughly what that means is that we will come back and reduce our budgets so that we can get ourselves in alignment with our actual growth and our, uh, make sure that our revenues and expenditures, um, that level out. So that's probably around a one point six or one point seven million dollar reduction in our budget, which we can handle. So that will be divided among the, the colleges in a different kind of way. And we decided that the ones that grow will not be, uh, be asked to give money back. The ones that didn't grow and didn't meet their goals. And you may be asking about that, but the system office also shares in that. So, um, we've done this before. Remember last year that we reduced the budget to four percent? And so, uh, we, we've done this before, but we want to make sure over the long term, we can't count on stimulus money to, um, that, that's a short-term solution to a longer-term issue that we have. So our enrollments right now are a little less than where they were in two thousand nineteen, which means again, we need to make sure that we come out of COVID with our budgets where they need to be. And we're in good shape with this, but we're in good shape because we're paying attention to it and we'll continue to do that. So, um, on the stimulus money, so we will start awarding that after official day. So I'll have an update or we will have an update for the board in October, but a full update will not be until November, just because of the timing on it. But we'll give you, uh, considerable updates in October, kind of where we are, what the money looks like and how many students we have. You know, we have quite a bit of money and we're not required to expend all of that until the spring of twenty-three. So we had a plan already that we've shared with you a couple of times, but we'll bring that back in and make sure that we share it with you, just so you can see how we have this, um, planned out. We, we have an amount of money that we want to give away every semester and the summer. So a total amount we've received is about two hundred and fifteen million dollars. We are required to give out fifty percent of that to the students, but we will give out about seventy-five or eighty percent of that, I think, to the students. So we'll cover whatever, uh, losses we have, whether that be with tuition and fees or, uh, the P P E that we spend and hopefully, uh, we'll, we'll come out of, we, we won't have to keep spending money for P P E, but whatever we expend for COVID expenses, we can, we can cover that. But at the end of the day, we'll spend what we need to spend and then, uh, give the rest of it to students. And our goal is again, seventy-five or eighty percent of that will go to students. On the COVID, uh, front, and, uh, thank you, John, for your comments. It's, uh, this has been, um, about the time I thought we were coming out of this and our enrollments were on the positive side for the longest time, and then Delta came in. And as John pointed out, I, I've sent out a couple of, uh, emails. I think I shared those with the board also at, at one of the recent, in one of the local hospitals. There were a hundred and forty-five people, I think, or a hundred and forty-one, a hundred and forty-five, I think, that were in the hospital on Monday. Only five had been vaccinated. The rest of them had not been vaccinated. And so that's our message is for our students and our employees is to get vaccinated. And you will minimize the chances of you getting really, really sick or even dying with that. And so, and I'm, I, we're all concerned about it. I, I know that, and I know that. And the reason we moved the date back a little bit was to give us more time to take a look and see what's happening. And, um, on Moyel Castillo's advice, we're kind of taking a look at this in two-week lumps. So we're going to go two weeks and see what it looks like. And I, you know, I've got grandkids and, uh, uh, I know, um, and I am concerned about our students being exposed to it and, and younger people. And we also know we have a number of employees. As I look around this room, most of the people in this room have younger kids at home. So, um, or many of them do. One, two, three, four. Yeah, most of them do have younger children at home. So I'm aware of what's going on in the schools and making sure that, um, you know, when they get sick, the parents need to stay home. I mean, it's as simple as that. So. Uh, so right now, as of today, we have about ninety students that we know have, um, that have COVID, ninety students and about two, twenty employees, a little over maybe twenty-two employees. And so we had a report today and then we had some others in the works. So ninety students and twenty employees. The numbers that we have for September, though, are trending in the wrong direction. And basically where we are is about where we were at the beginning of the year. So we'll see what happens there. And I sent, if you've not seen it yet on email, really, this is for the employees. I sent a note to the, uh, board also. You can take a look at that chart and you can see kind of where we are compared to where we were back in January and February. But, uh, we'll see. I read today that it's peaking a little bit. Instead of kind of going up in a line, it's beginning to level out, but after Labor Day, we'll see. I mean, I, I wasn't surprised by the numbers. I mentioned the work schedule. We'll, we'll play that by ear. I mean, I, I think that, um, with the students already enrolled, what I'm really pleased about again is our enrollments. If we only had a one percent decline in headcount, that's a good sign. That's, that's a good sign. We want to be on the plus side, but, you know, given the circumstances, we couldn't do this though without the support of our faculty, number one. They are making every adjustment that they possibly can in helping the students. And we'll have some more reports for you, but, uh, for the board members, our success rates have been, uh, high and our, uh, completion rates have been high for all categories of students, uh, black, Hispanic and Anglo. So I'm pleased about that. I mean, we're, that's a lot of work to do that. It's a lot of work to teach online classes and just kind of stick with it. And I would say the same thing about the staff. We, uh, I am concerned over the long term about, we are back four days a week for the staff, but our students need personal attention for everything from advising to financial aid, just to career help. And, uh, a lot of them just want to be around other students and we know that. So. Uh, but we're in the same boat, everybody else. So health and safety is going to come first. And then, uh, we're okay on the business side. We're paying attention on the business side, but, um, we'll see what happens. You may have seen the, the note that just came out today or the, uh, the president's, I guess it's his executive order, um, mandating that federal employees and federal contractors be vaccinated. I do not know how that's going to impact us. Um, we have quite a bit of federal money that comes into the college. If you count Pell Grants and the loans and all the grants that we have from federal sources, the federal government, the Department of Ed has before. We have requirements and restrictions if to receive the grants, we have to provide certain kind of training. And so they've used that before to receive federal money. We'll see. I, I, I sent that over to our attorneys right before this meeting, just to check on that and see, but that's, we'll see what happens there. So. And that's all, that's all I have. Overall, I think we're in pretty good shape though. I mean, considering everything, we're, um, again, um, we're, we're like in, we're, we're with everybody else. But I, I, I want to make sure, you know, that the faculty are the ones kind of pushing us forward here and holding everything together as we move forward and making sure that the students stick with it, that, that's the goal. So, because we will get out of this sooner or later. So.
Thank you, Dr. Head. Um, do we have a presentation from Faculty Senate?
Yes, we do.
May we?
Yes, we do. And we, uh, that will be introduced by Kimberly Ball and, um, Link is going to promote her to panelist and then we will have a video.
Kimberly, you're all set. I'll get ready to get the video up for you while you're, while you're speaking.
Kimberly is the Faculty Senate President over at North Harris. We're trying to get back, so we were, um, I'm not saying we're experimenting today, but we're experimenting today. And so we, we ask people, if they want to show up, they can show up clearly. But, uh, so we'll get back to president's reports and faculty senate reports and some of the other reports. A lot of that's going to be virtual though. We don't want that many people in this room. And you see how we've taken the effort to kind of scatter everybody and, uh, thank you all for wearing the mask. I know we, a couple of us don't have masks, so you can hear us. But, um, just so you'll know, I've had my, I've had my booster shot. So I'm, I'm, I'm good with these people up here. So. So Kimberly, go ahead.
Hi, hi. Thank you, Board of Trustees. I'm Kimberly and I just wanted to say welcome back. Um, people always look at me crazy when I say that, but the truth is for us as faculty, this is the beginning of our new year. This is, this year is still full of potential. It's still a brand new start. And, uh, like us, you're probably experiencing many of the same feelings this year that we are. Many of you are also back in the buildings. So I just want to say welcome back and thank you for your hard work and your service to our students and to our communities. I hope you enjoy our presentation and thank you so much for your time.
Greetings, Chancellor Head, Madam Chairperson Saldivar and esteemed members of the board. I am Kimberly Ball and I am grateful for this opportunity to speak with you and update you about the happenings on our campuses across the system. So on behalf of the Faculty Senate Presidents, I would like to tell you what we're looking forward to this new semester. At North Harris, our faculty, staff and administrators are excited about the new buzz around campus. We find this year that we are grateful for things we used to take for granted. The sound of students in the hallway is a beautiful noise. We were also able to meet with the Micasa students and their parents this year. Micasa is a program similar to that of the National Puente Program and has been proven to increase student success. It is a familiar event, but now new to us this year. Like other campuses, we are also excited to see our bookstore and cafe open again. We didn't realize how much we had missed them. At Tomball, they were able to enroll an additional five hundred students at their Super Saturday event and they are super excited about it. Faculty have also figured out how to bring back the theater. So we have another thing that used to be familiar, but is new and exciting this semester. They will be streaming their plays this fall and they will return to live performances in the spring. So look for that. Their art department will have a chalk art display on the sidewalks and students can come and decorate the sidewalks and make them beautiful. And it will be a very fun walk to campus for our students. One of the really cool things that Tomball has also been able to do this semester is their veterinary department was able to secure funds from their workforce council to buy simulators for their veterinary program. They explained to us that in other programs such as nursing, they have simulated figures for the these students to work with, but there's nothing like that for the vets. And so now our veterinary students will have models of actual animals with cuts and bruises and needing to be fixed, things that they can work on, so they can take that experience out into the world with. This year, University Park held a five-day student roar week last week. And during these days, they were able to showcase student performances. As you can see pictured here, we have, um, a musician accompanying a singer and then we also have a violinist. And on the other images, you see, um, their paws. Students were allowed to create their own paws, offering encouragement to each other to help them make a wonderful semester. And then they saved these paws in a wall of encouragement, one of the coolest things. A wonderful idea for our students. At Houston North, they were able to host a student prep event and they were able to have representatives from the CARE program. The CARE program provides food assistance, internet codes and tuition support. They also had reps from career services to provide interviewing tips, outfit selection, reven- resume writing. Uh, their communities and schools was also available to speak to the students and their disability services, their financial aid. The financial aid is currently offering book advances and scholarships. Their library services, uh, representatives were available as well. They also had reps talking about the mentoring program. The mentoring program is an awesome opportunity to students, for students to work with a faculty member who will help mentor them in the, uh, tools and tips and how to get through college. They also had representatives from the Office of Technology, which is currently providing laptops and in the future will be providing, um, Apple iPads. Their student life organization was also there, talking to students about clubs and events that students will be able to get involved in. Many of the students applied for textbook assistance while they were there and all of the students' families and friends were welcomed with snacks. They received fun, fun giveaways and everyone left with a dinner. Mental health has always been an important issue for everyone, but after COVID, faculty, staff, administrators and students are also suffering new stresses and mental health has become an even more important issue. Kingwood is taking the lead in working to provide opportunities for professional development, which include a variety of things, but most highlighted is the focus on mental health. Like other campuses, Kingwood also held a student event and they are happy to be, be able to provide student services in a variety of ways, such as Trio featured in the images here. In Montgomery, they are also excited by the opportunity to have plays again and they will be featuring the Thirty-Nine Steps this semester. So look for that as well. Montgomery was also able to have a student event. In fact, their Trio came out and their most innovative addition to our exciting list is that their art department participates in Empty Bowls. This is a grassroots movement that cares for and feeds the hungry. What a wonderful opportunity for our students. Sci Fair had some very exciting work to share with us today from a project that is continuing into the fall. Professor David Bruner and his honor students have been working in Friedmanstown on an excavation. They're trying to excavate a home. They are also now talking about a collaboration between the Anthropology and History Department on this very innovative activity. So they have lots of opportunities. Here is a quick clip of some of the things they have found.
Welcome back. This is halfway through the semester and the test unit is turning up some really interesting finds. We're getting the whole range of household artifacts plus some other activity area artifacts. We know we're coming down on a floor, so it's going to be an intact, flat surface, just an inch or so beneath where we're digging, where we have it revealed later today. But what's coming up around it makes me think that it's a backyard pad for something that involves a kiln or an oven. We're getting slag material and burnt material and a lot of ceramic tiles and burnt brick. So I think there is a, an activity going out here, either a, a, a cooking spot, an outdoor kitchen area, or something else for a craft activity that requires heating things. Maybe a, not a brick kiln, but something else. We'll know in just a few hours.
We are on day nine. We are currently in level four with a depth of twenty-five to thirty centimeters right now. And some of the big finds have been-
Uh, some ceramic pieces, iron stoneware pieces, um, bone fragments, worked bone fragments.
Dr. Bruner shared several clips with us and they have really found some amazing things. So please contact him if you would like some more information. Also at Sci Fair this year, their annual Lunabotics competition is a full-going engineering exercise where students receive practical experience in the engineering lifecycle from concept development to system closeout. They are currently looking for a team of ten to fifteen committed self-driven students with great communication and time management skills who are team players that are willing to research, learn and go above and beyond to succeed in this competition. And it sounds like a lot of fun. And so I would like to close out our presentation by sharing some of the many photos that we received of our- And so I would like to close out our presentation by sharing some of the many photos that we received of our students on campus. This has been a very exciting time for us. As faculty, we have missed the students so much. And it is so good to see their smiling eyes and sometimes their smiling faces. And we are very, very happy to share this with you. We are definitely looking forward to a semester where we get to enjoy being with our students, being with our colleagues, being with our friends at work. And so thank you so much for allowing us to share our new adventures, and we wish you each a very fabulous semester.
Thank you, Kimberly, so much. That was a really good presentation. Members, do you have any questions? I do have some questions, Kimberly. On, on the presentation, I think it was the second slide at the bottom right-hand, there is an image of a head of a dog. So is that, is that the simulation pet? Or, okay.
Yes, they had some amazing pictures, but we wanted to just go with one picture of a dog's head and more pictures of students.
Had to double-take to see what that was. Now, thank you so much for the presentation. We are really excited, you know, to have you guys on board. And obviously, you know, we know that you, you missed the students, so we missed them too. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time.
Any other presentations? All right, Board members, this is a time for any comments or any meetings or conferences that you have attended, if you can let us know. I know that Trustee Sullivan has some comments to provide for us.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. And trustees, just want to let everyone know that Redistricting Committee will meet on Monday, September 13th at 2:00 PM. The meeting will be held in the Training and Development Center Boardroom, located at 5,000 Research Forest Drive, The Woodlands, Texas, 77381, and it will also be conducted via Zoom. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make one announcement, please.
Trustee Pierce, yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say that MABA, which is the Mexican-American Bar Association of Houston, is going to reconvene its mentor program. The mentor program is a partnership with Aldine ISD and Houston North's Victory Early College High School. The meetings will be mainly virtual, their, you know, their mentor meetings, which is good. And I just want to give them a kudos because they have stood with us through the pandemic, and I just want to thank them for their continued support, and they're back on board, and they, they're raring to go. Their first meeting, as a matter of fact, will be on Friday, the 24th of September. So kudos to them for keeping the commitment.
Thank you, Trustee Pierce. Any other members? Yes, sir.
And I was fortunate enough to attend the graduation of the first class of nurses in the bachelor program. And I was, it was, it was a really good event. There's not very many of them. They're, you know, it's gonna be ramped up over time, and I think it's gonna make a big difference in in the healthcare community that we get to.
Yeah, I think we had 24 in the first class, and we're expanding that program to different places. So it's very successful. Thank you. What do we need them now?
Yes, we do. Okay, our next item is the consideration of the consent agenda. So I know there's a couple of items that we will consider separately, but members, do we have any further, any items that you would like to consider separate?
Mike Sullivan, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to, if it's already pulled, item four and item 15, please. Thank you.
Four and 15, okay.
Trustee Pierce, items five and 11.
Yes, ma'am, we have those. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I heard someone.
And I have a vote, eight, 10, and 13.
Okay, perfect. Anyone else?
Trustee Iris Wilson would like to add number nine. Eight and nine go together, so I have a couple of questions.
So item number nine. Okay.
Yes.
All right. So may I have, okay, so may I have a motion and a second to adopt items one, three, six, seven, 12, 14, 16, and 17?
Motion Sullivan.
Have a second?
Second, Kane.
All right, it's being moved improperly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Items passes. Thank you. All right, so may I have a motion and a second to consider item two?
Motion Sullivan.
And a second?
Second vote.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on item number two?
Madam Chair, I've asked Jennifer Mott to come up and give an overview of exactly what the item is and what's, what's coming up with on October the 7th, so.
Yes, good, good evening. Can everyone hear me? No. Can I take it off?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yes, there is a presentation, a few slides to go over what item number two is. Action item number two is asking the board to approve two items, which is to provide the notice of intent to hold a public hearing and to set the ad valorem tax rate for tax year 2021. Yes, if we could go to the next slide, please.
Jennifer, let's just make sure they're not voting on the tax rate tonight. Just, I want to clarify that, so.
No, they're voting to set the proposed rate for consideration and to set the public hearing to discuss that rate.
Right, okay.
Yes. And the rate being proposed is a total of 10.78 cents. It's broken into two components. The MNO is maintenance and operations, and that is eight cents, and that is the, what funds the operating budget. In addition to that, INS, that is the Interest and Sinking Fund at 2.78 cents, and that funds the Debt Service Fund. So debt on our general obligation bonds. So this, this is the proposed rate for fiscal year 2022, which is tax year 2021. Next slide, please. So I just want to go over some of the legislative requirements that's included with setting the tax rate. First, I want to note, in this most recent legislative session, there were no significant changes. But it is worth noting that in the prior session, there were some significant changes, and I just want to review those again. And that is first, what used to be called the Effective Tax Rate, or ETR, is now referred to as the No New Revenue, NNR, tax rate. This is the rate we, we calculated to figure out what is the rate that would result in the same amount of tax revenues as we received in the prior year. Essentially, how much to, that backing out the appraised value growth that occurs. That, and then our rate would be 10.13 cents. Then there is the voter approval tax rate. This used to be called, just for those who may have been familiar with it, the rollback tax rate, or RTR. This rate is the, that NNR plus an 8% allowance for operations. And so one of the additions of Senate Bill Two says that adopting a rate greater than the voter approval tax rate automatically triggers a general election for voters to either approve that higher rate, or if they don't, then it goes to that rollback rate, the voter approval tax rate. So that is 10.93 cents. What we are proposing is 10.78 cents, which is above the NNR, but below that voter approval tax rate. It is about 6.4% above the NNR. Next slide, please. Some of the other requirements that go along with this is timeline requirements. Really receiving the official certified values is what sets off the whole timeline. We receive those values on August 16th. From there, we do need to publish on our website the NNR and the VAR rates. We did that yesterday. And then we also have to hold a public hearing, and we have to publish a notice at least five days prior to that hearing. So we plan to publish that notice on our website and in newspapers on Monday, September 27th. From there, the intent here with this item is then for the public hearing to be held on Thursday, October 7th. And then following that public hearing, it would be the regular board meeting where the board would consider adopting that tax rate. So both of those, they would be two separate sessions, but the intent is to hold them on the same day. First, the public hearing, and then the regular board meeting where that rate would be taken under consideration by the board.
And that date is?
Excuse me?
Date of that?
October 7th, sorry, Thursday, October 7th. And then do just want to note from the whole timeline that the deadline for Lone Star College to adopt a tax rate is Friday, October 15th.
That's our next scheduled board meeting. The same, it'll be the same day.
I have a question.
Yes.
This is Trustee Wilson. So what time is the public hearing?
I guess we would still set that time about at 5 o'clock.
Okay, I'm just checking because you have to remember, people work and, you know, have to get their kids from school. So we want to make sure that the public and taxpayers have, have an opportunity to come. That was my question.
Next slide, please. And then a few charts here just to illustrate this proposed tax rate of 10.78 cents. This chart shows the appraised values, the historical values over about the past 10 years. And you can see that FY22, the estimated appraised value is a total of 236 billion. The bulk of that coming from Harris County. Next slide, please. And then this shows a 15-year history of our tax rate, and really want to show that we have consistently been well below the state average over this time period, and we have a lower tax rate at this 10.78 cents than even back in fiscal year 2007. Next slide, please. This is just another visual of the proposed tax rate, and then the tax revenues that result from that tax rate. There, you can again see, we've kept it flat at this 10.78 cents for several years now, since 2017, and showing that for fiscal year 22, the projected 10.78 cents, which was the assumption also included in the fiscal year 2022 budget adopted by the board back at this, just this past August. Next slide, please. And finally, I did just want to summarize again that timeline calendar that I already went through in slightly more detail. Again, today is the board meeting for the board to set the proposed tax rate and set that public hearing. Then Thursday, October 7th, would be that public hearing, followed by the regular board meeting where the board would vote on that tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Board members, do we have any additional comments on this particular line item? Hearing none. All those in favor of item two, please vote aye.
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 All those opposed? The ayes have it. All right, item number four. May I have a motion and a second to consider item number four?
Motion Sullivan.
Could I have a second?
Second vote.
It's been moved improperly second. Any questions or comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, Mike Sullivan here. If I could, thank you for pulling this item. I just want to make sure, while this is a good audit plan and one that I support, want the chancellor to offer some comment as to whether or not the Audit Committee, if they chose to, could add an item to the, the list of work to be done if something comes up during the year that we don't anticipate.
Yes, absolutely. So if you take a look at this, if you have any additions or during the middle of the year, that's not uncommon for us to do. This is a, this is a base. These are issues that we've identified right now. So if something comes up from you or even from us, we'll ask the Audit Committee to make that a priority or take a look at it, depending on how critical it is. So, yes.
Good, I'm fully supportive. I think it's a great plan, one that covers a lot of areas within the district and the system. So I have no concerns at this point, but thank you for clarification. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, trustee. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of item number four?
Aye.
All those opposed? The items have it. May I have a motion and a second to consider item number five separately?
So moved.
Second, Sullivan.
It's been moved improperly second. I think this is Trustee Pierce.
Yeah, my concern here was that, you know, as a fiduciary of taxpayers' money, and I read this, the action item, it's just that up to a million dollars, you know, that's a lot of money. And I just would, you know, like to know where these contracts are going, you know, where the procurements are going. That's my concern. And that's basically a comment that I wanted to make on action item five.
Sure, I'm gonna ask Jennifer Mott to come up and explain what the goal here is.
Sorry, I have to turn on the microphone. Yes, the goal here is, this is actually quite similar to board agenda items that also came through this past August that had larger approval amounts for OTS and police. This allows for regular operations to occur throughout the year. This one in particular, for financial services, in particular, within a lot of the financial areas, I would like to conduct operational audits of each area just to increase our efficiency, especially as we look at cutting budgets. I would, you know, operational audits already, I have ready to kick off for a few of the departments within the financial operations area. And over the year, I'd like to hit most of the departments that handle financial operations and facilities through operational audits, including financial aid, and just to have those reviews done. And so that's what, the majority of what this item would cover.
You want to talk about the specific, the four items that we've, that you've identified right now, RDA and payroll, and not, not in a lot of detail, just tell the trustees the priorities that we have right now.
Yes, so sort of in the phase one of operational audits that I'm conducting includes payroll, includes RDA, which is sort of grants, development, and procurement are the three areas that I'm starting with. But, and it's not about particularly picking on them. I really do want to get through each area within financial operations.
So we may not spend a million dollars, but this is, to me, part of our due diligence. We, we have auditors, as you all know, but we also want to take a deep dive in a couple of these areas and make sure that we're adhering to standard practice. And we're so large right now, you know that we have a over, well, if you count our construction, we're spending over, we're close to 560 or 70 million a year. So we want outside people to come in and take a look at what we're, what we're doing, just to make sure we don't have any, any issues. When we have issues, they're big ones for us if we get off track here. So it's just a, I think, a double check, and I, I think it helps us to come in and have a different set of eyes, take a look at this, so.
And for me in particular, as we, you know, have needed to reduce budgets through COVID, and even, you know, again, here in the fall, when a lot of the workload doesn't necessarily decrease significantly, I want to find more efficient ways for the staff, who, we have fewer staff than we did, to be able to continue to carry that workload.
I, I had a couple of questions on this. We, we have, we've got a policy that says that contracts up to $100,000 have to be pre-approved by the board. And we've, we've given pre-approvals for a number of these things. Is there a, any follow-up on that to verify that indeed? And as I understand it, the pre-approval is based on the need to be able to act quickly to get these contracts moving, to get the, the. Uh, to get these contracts moving, to get the, the product in, in. You know, I, on, in the path to, to get to us in a timely manner or. Or uh, in other cases, it it has to do with the best pricing is available. In, in a timely manner that doesn't match our, our schedule, our meeting schedules for approvals. So. Did, are we going back and verifying that all of these fit that, you know, one of those categories that we've been. Uh, giving the preapproval on?
Uh, yeah, I mean, and in particular, as we do all these, the same procurement rules still apply. Uh, and we definitely make sure that we follow all of those procedures each time, whether it's part of these preapprovals. Um, it, for this one or the ones that the board approved uh just last month in August, uh, we do make sure we follow that each time.
So if the, but one of his, I think one of his questions is if we go over a hundred thousand dollars on any of these bids, then we come back to the board for.
Well, that's what this is for is so we need to come to the board for contracts that exceed a hundred thousand.
Right.
So what this is doing is it's giving authorization for this particular purpose. It gives us authorization to execute contracts. Above the hundred thousand, but not more than five hundred thousand without bringing that back to the board. So that's what this preapproval is for, is in that range. Of a hundred thousand up to five hundred thousand. Is in that range for these particular purposes. Like I mentioned, back in August, uh, there's similar type approvals. For O T S to purchase the technology, equipment and software, uh, also for facilities and construction. R and R and each, each separate agenda item specifies what the purpose is for that approval.
So if it's a preapproved, say for a construction project. Preapproved for a, a variance of. Above a hundred thousand, up to five hundred thousand. Does that mean any change order that comes in, say, three hundred thousand? Gets uh approved without.
No. It's the limit on the total amount of the contract. So the total contract, e- even with change orders could still could not exceed. Uh, the amount of the contract. Uh, the original contract. So if the original and the original contract under these preapprovals cannot exceed five hundred thousand. Um, but there's also identified funding sources too. So the majority of our. Um, major projects, right, easily exceed five hundred thousand. So those generally do come back to the board. The ones that might be between the one hundred thousand and the five hundred thousand are more like our R and R type projects, small construction projects, perhaps renovations.
Okay.
Any further comments?
Uh, yes, trust yourself, David.
Yes, sir.
Mark, Mario. Um, yeah, I was cut off a little bit uh when uh Jennifer started uh explaining it. I, I, so she may have already explained this, but um, as far as um, uh, do we have like a ratification, do we get to ratify if it reaches those amount at some point? Did I miss that part?
Since this provides that approval, there, there is no ratification needed. So no, that, that does not happen.
I have a question. This is trustee Wilson. Um. How are you all seeking out consulting firms or looking for an audit company? Like, how is that process gonna go and? Like, can you give us more detail on that? Or do you all already have people in mind? I mean, can you expound on that?
Sure, I mean, there, like I said, e- even with this, we still have to follow the same procurement rules. So for example, if it's. Above ten thousand but under fifty thousand, then we need to get three quotes. Um, from various firms. If it's above fifty thousand, then we need to conduct a solicitation either. Or an R F P, request for proposals or request for qualifications, which then includes the evaluations. So even other agenda items that come to the board. And you see those evaluations that's conducted, that same process is followed uh for anything that would exceed fifty thousand. So there would be an open public solicitation.
Right, and there are committees that, we have different committees, Jennifer and I are not on these committees. So we have um, I, I think what I'll just call content expert, somebody that knows what they're doing that reviews all this. And they're the ones, there's a couple of items in the agenda tonight where you see points. And those were committees that uh, I think item number eleven. There's a, there's a chart back there.
Yeah, there's the scoring associated with that and a couple others.
So it's not a matter of having somebody in mind. I mean, they have to bid on it like anybody else would, submit their proposal, and then we have committees that take a look at it. And then you see those results when they come back down. So the, the board, the board will approve all that and take a look at it, so.
Okay, this is trustee Pierce again.
Alright.
Uh, I, I'm just not comfortable with um. Not bringing this back to the board for, I'm sorry, for, you know, approval. I'm just not comfortable with that kind of money. As a tax, you guys taxpayer and as a fiduciary over taxpayers' money. I wanna know, I don't wanna be blindsided in, okay, I did, even though there's small contracts, they, 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 small contracts can add up to a lot of money. And uh, I, I, I don't, I'm not comfortable with the action item five. I'm just not comfortable with it.
Thank you, trustee Pierce. Any further questions on item number five?
Yes, Mike Sullivan.
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Chancellor Head, if you would, uh, clarify for me, uh, or confirm. I think, you know, I've been on board two and a half years now, if I'm not mistaken. And it's been standard practice and it's probably in policy. Um, that these agenda items uh can come up. And I've noticed they say that the Chancellor is, is designated to negotiate a contract up to a value. Uh, isn't that what we've been doing? And did that predate me and almost, well, not vote, but several others on the board?
Yes, that's what we've been doing. Normally, you would see something like this come in August when we have these big ticket items, and there were a number of them, multi-million dollar. Mostly what Jennifer mentioned was um I T, that's where we see. And uh, construction projects where you've approved kind of a blanket. So we have limits that we can go up to. Without having to come back in every time, because if we did that, not only does it delay the process, it, it will make the board agenda item. I mean, it, it, depending on what the level is, but if we did construction projects and had, if we broke those up. And brought those, every one of them over a hundred thousand, man, uh, you would be here all night, so.
Yeah.
I mean, we can.
I think my point really is that we're talking about something that we've been voting on and doing. And we all get the agenda in advance, we all get a chance to look at it and ask questions. Um, so anyway, just thought I'd point that out. Thank you.
It's been good practice. I mean, I, I hear the concerns, but we're more than happy to bring back what we, what we're doing, so you know, but that. You, you're getting, I mean, from our perspective, the board is getting this information on a pretty regular basis, but. We can provide you more information if you would like as we move through the process, so you can see. How, how all this works, so.
Appreciate that transfer here, but let me say, as an elected official. And a fiduciary of taxpayers' money, I don't see anything wrong with letting the public know what we are asking and concerned about. That's why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Pierce. If, if I may say, would it be possible, I guess, if we could have, if you could, Jennifer, if you can send us like maybe a presentation or something like how the bidding works and. All that information, perhaps that might be a little bit helpful to us.
On the, on the procurement process?
Yes.
Yes, I can absolutely put something together and share that.
Alright, thank you. Um. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of item number five, please vote aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed?
This is Iris Wilson. I'm gonna abstain.
Please let the record know that trustee Wilson is abstaining.
And trustee Pierce voted no. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, item number five passes. Um, next in line is item number eight. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Sullivan, second Sullivan.
Thank you. Um.
That was me. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. Um, we have seven trustees here, uh, two abstained, so we need to confirm on that last agenda item that five people voted. Yay.
Do I? Do I make a?
We just need a roll call vote.
A roll call?
Yes, ma'am, to make sure that we have the necessary five under the law and book policy. Thank you, sorry for interrupting.
Thank you so much for reminding me. Thank you. Let's go back to item number five and let's do a roll call just to make sure we got this right. Um. So let's go with trustee vote.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, trustee Kane?
Aye.
Aye. Let's go with our virtual attendees, trustee Maria.
Aye.
Trustee Wilson.
Abstain.
Trustee Pierce.
No.
Trustee Sullivan.
Heck, yes.
And then myself, yes. So item passes. Thank you so much for reminding me. Um, let's go back to item number eight. I think I heard of first and a second. Um, so it's been moved improperly second. Any questions or comments on that?
Uh, explain to me, uh, University of Houston is leasing labs and classrooms?
Yes.
And are they? Labs and classrooms that we're not using at this time?
Yes, right.
And. Are they uh leasing them so that? In, in a manner that uh. Those resources are dedicated to them twenty-four seven for?
So, uh, you probably know more about the, exactly what they're doing. We met, uh, actually, Dr. Kishval and I met with the University of Houston. So they've been leasing space from us. At uh Kingwood and Sci Fair for a number of years and um. I really would like for you to comment about the, how you do the, how you were doing the scheduling. And I know you're not over there. I know Dr. Napolos is over there, but she knows how this works right now, so.
Yeah, so at Sci Fair, I know, and Kingwood, I believe they're leasing space as part of the extension of teaching, the teaching program. So it's mutually beneficial. In fact, for our students who are wanting to go on to U H D as well as um them to be on site for our students. So it's almost like a transfer opportunity. And it is, I know at Sci Fair, it's a classroom and a, an advisor space to help advise students. Um, and a classroom space, so it's uh, but then there's also, Kingwood has a larger teaching um, um, transfer. Program, but they're leasing space more, and then we have a university center.
Weren't they teaching most of their classes in the afternoon and at night when we were not using? Uh, I can ask Mario Castillo to come up.
For Sci Fair, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, it's off-site, uh, off-hours and we have the space at Sci Fair to be able to lend it to them.
Was that the same over at Kingwood when you were over there? Yeah.
How do you handle um? In the, in the realm of uh. The labs, how do you, are these chemistry labs or?
I don't, I, I thought most of it was teacher education. I know, go ahead, Mario. I've got a list of the classes. We, we talked about this last week with the University of Houston downtown people.
It's a computer lab.
Yeah, so at Kingwood, it's computer labs. And they had their own computer lab separate from the rest of Kingwood.
Yeah.
They have their own computers in our space?
No.
No, sir, that's what they're leasing from us, is the computer labs.
Okay.
This is a separate agreement from the university centers. Uh, and this is University of Houston downtown that's doing this. But the agreement is with the University of Houston system.
Right.
If that, so.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think, I'll take a look at that. I've got the schedule. We looked at it. I don't think they're offering any, they don't, they're not using biology or chemistry. I think it's just computers.
No, not, not at Sci Fair, and I believe at Kingwood, it's all te- uh, teaching as well, so.
Okay.
It's, it's a good partnership for us. I mean, the goal here is we want our students to go someplace. We, we've had this offer, Stephen F. Austin is thinking about offering classes over at Kingwood and. Um, we've got some other colleges we're talking with that are offering in, maybe in different places, aside from the university centers, so.
Uh, um, yeah, well, that makes a lot of sense, especially if it's, if we're still using those labs and classrooms.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, okay.
Any further comments?
Yes, uh, Chair Mike Sullivan.
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you. Um, piggybacking on Dr. Head's comments, I. If graduated from University of Houston downtown, it's no big deal, but. The President's Office recently said how important it was to them and to their students uh to be able to use University Park. Uh, they lease space there as well. So this is good P R, uh, it's good recognition, uh, transfer hours are gonna be readily available for our. A A students that want to transfer. It's just a great deal and um, it started a lot before we got here and, and uh. You know, hopefully it'll continue for a long time. Dr. Head, that's right, U P, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Hearing none. May I have uh all those in favor of item number eight? Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The item passes. Our next line item is number nine. May I have a, a motion and a second?
Motion Sullivan.
I have a second?
Second vote.
It's been moved improperly second. Um, any comments of item number nine? Think we had. Do we have a board member?
Eight and nine kind of go together.
Okay.
They're the same, it's the same basic, it's the same.
It's the same thing.
Agreement, yeah.
Okay, so let us um. All those in favor of item number nine, please go with the usual aye.
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 All those opposed? Item number nine passes. Um, item number ten, may I have a motion and a second?
Motion Sullivan.
It's moved improperly second. Any comments of item number ten?
Uh. And I know that the, the closing note on this was the, that uh, we expect to be asked to start a program in this. But how, uh, this is a, a state-of-the-art esports. Lab, I guess. Uh, how, how's that gonna produce, produce um? Revenue now?
Well, uh, so there's a couple of different esports programs around. One, the big one will be over at uh Houston North. And that's actually a program that's, um, then correct me if I'm wrong, is housed in the business department. So it's a division of the business department. So what's happening though, and, and that's not why U P is set up, not right now. The goal over there is to get students engaged, which is what you have an esports facility over at your place also. Um, it's the, for, for lack of other words, it's just like the modern version of us, that what we do, used to do in student services. We want students to um. If, if they're gonna be around school, have them actively engaged and, and be working on something that could lead to a degree. Esports, by the way, and we've had a number of presentations over at uh Houston North and been working with people. The esports is actually a career right now. It is a career where people are making seventy-five and a hundred thousand dollars uh gaming, and it's basically an extension of gaming. So his program, uh, and, and his being uh Quentin Wright's program is a, is a. Program that will lead to a degree of some kind or certificate and gaming. The one over at University Park right now is to keep the students on campus and keep them actively engaged in campus life. And then we want to expand that to a certificate or, is, is yours a certificate or a degree? Certificate, yeah, so. It's actually, we brought in experts from across the country to take a look at esports. This is uh pretty interesting as for somebody our age that you actually get paid. Because we all know people that like game, or well, your grandkids like gaming, or a lot of them do anyway, and they're getting paid for it right now. Like uh Fortnite and some of the things you see on ESPN where. That they've, they've got stadiums. That in Houston right now that are, it's just esports is what it's called, so, but it's gaming, so. It's different.
Is, is it a stadium like a uh?
It's a stadium like this room.
The Roman Colosseum?
No, it's a stadium like this room where they. No, it's a stadium like this room, where they would have seats in there. But John, you know what, you see, you're nodding your head, so you know what I'm talking about. It's a smaller facility where they would have, you can, if you don't have anything to do, you can look at ESPN sometime and watch the gaming tournaments that they have. And it's, it's probably in a room like this with seats up, where they're with a lot of young people on computers. Fighting each other and doing battles and trying to outthink each other.
And, and that makes money somehow.
I'm aware of it, because my grandson does it all the time. And he deals with his friends and people he never knows, and he puts headphones on and they're talking to each other all the time. I may have to bring an example up here sometime and, and show the board what esports looks like, Dr. Wright.
Huh.
Okay.
Any further comments on line number 10? Hearing none, all those in favor, please vote the usual aye.
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 All those opposed? Item number 10 passes. Item number 11, may I have a motion and a second?
Motion Sullivan. Second Sullivan.
It's been moved improperly second, any comments or suggestions on item number 11?
I just want to, Madam Chair, this is trustee Pierce, and I just wanted to comment that I did go through, and I know how you do your, you know, your chart. But you know, my concern is always about diversity, so that was my comment. On, I think, I want to say that, I went through all of the one, it's not all the way on here, but what is the name of, you have, I think, what is it? Three, three, I don't have it in front of me right now, I need to put my other computer up. But don't you have three designees, I mean, I mean, three architectural design firms that you're going to recommend? For this?
I think, Jennifer, you might want to answer that for us.
They're not being recommended, but those were the three.
The two priorities, the three top ones, okay, that's what is not recommended, okay. Fine, but I don't have it in front of me, but I did, but anyway, that was my concern, it was my research.
Okay.
I'm done.
Do you need any further, any further?
That's okay, he said they weren't recommended, they were just the ones who came out on top, I guess the three top choices. Am I right Chancellor? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, provided as backup are the bid tabulations behind it that shows the committee scoring of all the firms. And so the firm being recommended is who had the top score on this item. But there were, there were three that were sort of the finalists.
Right, right.
It was the top scorer, even among the.
Okay, I get it.
All right, thank you trustee Pierce.
And, yes, sir. And my only comments, I'd like to, there was made mention of an investigative report dated December 12th, 2020. And I'd like to review that report.
But investigative report of?
Well, that's what was in the, the presentation on our, in our board minutes.
Are you talking about the Yellowstone country?
No, there is a drainage study that was done as the first step prior to this.
Oh, 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 yes, yes, okay.
I believe has and absolutely can be provided, yes.
Okay, I'd like to see that.
Yeah, okay.
It just sounds funny though, doesn't it, on the surface, investigative report, my ears kind of perked up.
And, and I was kind of assuming that, I mean, they're, they're trying to mitigate for potential future flooding. And here is a report from 2020, and there's been, since 2020, there've been a number of changes in regulations. And a lot of changes in the works as far as how we design and model for.
Did something happen?
Well, there's a report that evidently.
Can I jump in, Madam Chair?
Just hit me as odd that that would be the case.
We.
It keeps freezing.
I didn't understand.
She said it keeps freezing.
We're having some technical difficulties, Dr. Vog.
I, I don't know.
The audio, it keeps freezing on us at this time.
Is everyone able to hear us now?
I can hear you now. Yes, you're good now.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll get that report for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, can I jump in?
Yes, trustee Sullivan.
Thank you, Mike Sullivan. The, just real quick, I'm not trying to prolong this, but is the report we're talking about now different from the study that was sent to David Vogt and I a few months ago?
No.
Okay, so if, if we had, I mean, I know I received it, I looked at it and went through it fairly closely as a layman, not as an architect or engineer. Is there going to be anything different in this report now, and if, if we got it before, why are we getting it again?
Well, I don't think I got it.
Yeah.
So I'd like to get it.
Okay, sure, yeah, David, and I'm not trying to prevent you from getting it, I'm asking the administration, why is it back for us if nothing's changed?
Well, we'll make sure you, you see the report. And I, I think, right now, we're just asking for design services, we're not doing any, we're, that's all we're doing right now, is asking for permission to move ahead on the design features of this flood mitigation plan that we have. And in a few minutes, Jennifer, it's going to give an update on where we are with FEMA. And I'm a little more optimistic and probably more supportive of this than I was before, because I think FEMA will reimburse us for this. We're finally beginning to see movement, and I'm jumping ahead. But we have some really good news from FEMA right now, which, which is going to help us, I think, as we think about spending the kind of money we're talking about in the flood mitigation plan around Kingwood, we think that we can get reimbursed for that. So we'll get the report, and we're, we'll move deliberately on the, the flood mitigation design and the plan, because that's complicated. And, and I'll make sure you get.
I have no objection to the, to the, to the item on the agenda for approval. I just want to.
Just see the thing, yeah, okay.
Know what there's.
And it was a really large file, so I'll put it on, I'll get it on a thumb drive to you, just in case it didn't make it through email. That certainly happens for really large files.
Yeah.
I'll do that.
I get a copy of that too, this is Iris Wilson.
Send it to everybody, yeah, we'll send it to all board members, so you can see it.
Yeah, I'll find a way to make sure, like I said, it is a large file, so perhaps email wasn't the best way, I'll make sure I find a way.
Well, they just deliver it to them, print it, and deliver the thing to them, that's the easiest way.
I'd rather have it on a thumb.
On the, on your computer, or on a, on a thumb drive, yeah, okay, got it.
Okay.
We can print it for you, too, so.
All right, thank you, any further comments? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of item number 11?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Item passes.
I abstain, make sure trustee Pierce abstains, make sure you have that.
Thank you.
And Iris Wilson abstained as well.
Thank. I was advised to do a roll call vote, so let's do that. So item number 11, let's see, trustee vote?
Aye.
Trustee Kane?
Aye.
Trustee Maria?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Abstain.
Trustee Pierce?
Abstain.
Trustee Sullivan?
Heck yes.
And myself, yes. All right, that's fine, so we, we got this, thank you, item passes. Item number 13, may I have a motion and a second?
Motion Sullivan.
Have a second? Thank you, it's been moved improperly second, any comments?
I thought that the procurement and everything, that was fine, I liked, I liked the way that was handled. The, I just, I just think that, I think that the college should reserve the right to review the the collection procedures, when they're, it puts it on the, on the contractor to, the collection company to put together a procedure. And I think we should review those procedures and have, have input into them to see that they're not going overboard in, in their procedures.
Okay.
Or, or breaking the law.
Yeah, we'll can do that, Jennifer, okay.
Any further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The item passes. Next item is number 15.
Motion Sullivan.
Second, may I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, it's been moved improperly second, any comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd ask the item before, I just want to take a minute to recognize, it's taken a long time for this item to get to this point. But I want to thank everyone involved for sticking with it and sticking to it. And while this building will be at the Kingwood campus, students and jurisdictions from throughout the region will use it. And it's going to be a great benefit to everyone involved, and we're all going to be helping our fire and EMS personnel, and that helps our community. So thank you, and thanks to everybody involved in the item.
Thank you, any further comments? Here, hearing none, all those in favor? Please aye. All those opposed? Item number 15 passes. If I may, trustees, I believe we have to go back and re-vote, I guess, if that's the right term. Item number two with a public hearing tax. I was advised that there's a certain language that I have to mention for it to properly pass. So if we can go back to item number two, the public hearing tax notice, or rate, I'm sorry. Okay, so I, Miriam Saldivar, move to propose the maintenance and operations at Valerian rate of 0.0800 per 100 valuation for the 2021 tax year to be adopted at the October 7th, 2021, regular Board of Trustees meeting. And one public hearing to be held at 5:00 PM on the same day, Thursday, October 7th. If adopted as, as proposed, the total ad Valerian tax rate for the Lone Star College will remain the same at .1078 per 100 valuation. So I, may I have all those?
Motion?
Motion Sullivan, second Sullivan.
Okay, could I have a second?
Second.
Perfect, all those in favor of item number two, please vote with the usual aye.
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 All those opposed? Item number two properly passes this time. Thank you. Thank you trustees for bearing with me. All right, our next item is financial reports.
Yes, thank you, I have presented for you the, the financial reports for the month closing July 31st, 2021. So I do want to note here, even though here in September, we are now officially in fiscal year 2022, right? Just because of the, the natural lag that occurs with closing our books and processing our financials. We are still reporting now on July 31st, 2021, which is 11 months into the prior fiscal year 2021. At the October board meeting is when I will then also present the monthly financial report, which would be for fiscal year 2021, year end, August 31st. That will just be a normal monthly financial report, and then December is when the comprehensive annual financial report comes out. But I did just want to note that for us, that these financials are still reflecting the prior fiscal year. If we could go to the next slide, please. So here, this is showing revenues, again, this is for fiscal year 2021, as of the end of July, 384 million in actual revenues had been collected. This is above 100%, this is more than the amount of revenues that we had budgeted. And if you remember, in fiscal year 2021, when we built that budget in spring, summer of 2020, not knowing where COVID was going, we built that budget assuming a 10% decline in credit hours. At the end of the year, we had on average somewhere between 4.5% to 5% decline, certainly still a decline, but nowhere near as bad as a 10% decline. So with that difference in credit hours, as I've been mentioning in prior monthly financial reports, we are expecting revenues to exceed the amount that we had budgeted. And this shows, this is the first month where it finally did exceed that 100% mark. Next slide, please. So this shows our actual expenditures as of the end of July 31st, 2021. Again, I'm going to just, just to keep noting for everyone, this is still the prior fiscal year. At that point in time, we had 301 million of actual expenditures, or 80% of what the board adopted in the fiscal year 21 budget. So as you can see, a lot of the mechanisms that we continue to have in place throughout last fiscal year, the hiring freeze, you know, looking at all of our expenditures, I think this, this shows that we continue to watch very closely that spending. You can tell that that spend rate is well below prior years. Next slide, please. So this and the next slide now really just shows those charts that I just referred to, and the actual numbers that goes into that. So for the revenue side, our forecasted variance is 6.2 million in revenues above the budget, right? And of course, that is still a forecast, we have to finish processing all of the August financials. But that is the, the forecast for ending the year with that 6.1 million variance in revenues. Next slide, please. And then on the expenditure side, what we, where we are forecasting to end the year at is 7.6 million in expenditures below the budgeted amount. So again, a negative number, but on the expenditure side, a positive variance for us, showing that we continue to watch our spending and come in well below the adopted budget. Next slide, please. So this is the FEMA report, which I think I have not reported on in, in a little bit. So I am happy to bring, as Dr. Head kind of referenced, positive movement here. So first, I would call your attention to, I know it's small, row number eight, where it says awarded. The prior column is, the last time I reported this, back in June, we had been awarded $11 million. We have now, now we have been awarded 15 million, so we have received additional funds for reimbursement. So that's definitely a win. But the other major thing I want to note here is, you noticed that there was 15 million still sitting up in sort of stage four pending FEMA documentation review. We now have that moved down, you see in stage number seven is FEMA obligated, that amount is 24 million. For me, this is a major step, because the way the process works is FEMA does all of its reviews and asks for all the documentation and questions. Once FEMA obligates it, they then send the funds. they then send the funds to the state of Texas, the TIDOM. And so now we do have to provide additional documentation to TIDOM. But basically the process with FEMA itself has been substantially completed and this has moved over to the state level and we complete. And then you see, once we complete the documentation with TIDOM, the next step after stage seven FEMA obligated is for it to move into that awarded category.
So TIDOM is the Texas Department of Emergency Management, which most of us didn't realize existed until Hurricane Harvey. And so when you take a look at like with the freezes and with ERCOT and all that, so TIDOM was the one behind the scenes trying to help. And when we have floods and different places in state or tornado damage or something, TIDOM is the one that, that's the state agency. And the money comes from FEMA through TIDOM and then it goes to local jurisdictions.
So I am quite excited to share this. I do want to make, take a moment to mention specifically in the finance team, Terry Wheeler and Valerie Cott for continuing to work this. Terry Wheeler in particular provided Excel sheets to FEMA, literally tens of thousands rows long. So definitely a lot of very detailed work has gone into this.
I do have a question, Jennifer. On item, on the number eight, I think awarded.
Eight awarded. Yes.
Yes. So it's 11 million. That's additional 14 million? Is that how, am I supposed to read that?
No, that is the new amount. It's not additional. It is 14, the 14.8 million total. So it is about three to four million higher than it was previously. Yes. But then the 24 million would still be, once it moves down to that next stage, would be additional. So it would be that 14 plus the 24, once we can get that moved to the next stage.
Well, the bottom line over this is we think we're going to be fully funded for damage. That was four years ago, as you all know. So probably four and a half years before we get fully funded for it. Actually, and, and I talked to some of you about this, we, we received $13 million from the state and, which is probably more money than we need right now. And we told the state at the time when they made the award, they had, they were asking us about a clawback provision, but what we told them was if we didn't need the money, we would return what we didn't need. So we're going to wait until we actually receive the check from FEMA, but we'll come back to the board probably with a number that we think we'd like to reimburse the state. And I think from my perspective, that's important because we personally lobbied and talked to a lot of different people, including our state reps, our state senators, the lieutenant governor, the governor's office. And that was kind of unusual for community colleges to be receiving that kind of money, but told them if we didn't need it, we needed it at the time to get going again. But we told them at the end, if we were reimbursed for more money, then we would, we would provide that money back. I think if we probably do that, we'll be the one of the few people that actually give money back to the state. So but I think that's the right thing to do. I think it'll pay off the next time if we need assistance. They know we'll do the right thing. So it's our money. I mean, not our money, the college. I mean, it's our money taxpayers. So that's the way I kind of look at it. We're all taxpayers too, so.
Yes. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good presentation. Board members, any comments?
Yes, ma'am, if I may. Mike Sullivan.
Yes.
Thank you, Jennifer. Hate to call you back up. Man, it's hard. In fact, if we could number these slides in the future, so we could get, we could go back to slide number eight, let's say, because now I've got to describe a slide that I vaguely remember. But when you showed the $6 million number, Jennifer, would you go have someone go back to that, please?
Yes.
Okay, right there. Good. Yes, no, no, right there. Alright, so at that, I'll kind of decide if we had numbers there, I could say page number. Alright, so what is miscellaneous revenue reduction of 2.4 million? How, what is that? What categories does that include?
That includes investment income from our cash pool accounts, but really the predominant thing in the miscellaneous revenue category is our auxiliary revenues. So the bookstores, our cafeterias, those items, as you can see, took a significant revenue hit because it was closed much of the year. So that's what would fall under miscellaneous revenue.
Okay, is it mainly the auxiliary funds from the campuses?
I can definitely go confirm that. I think that is a large share of it, but rather than speculate, I can certainly get you details. On both of those items, the product and service and the miscellaneous revenue, those two categories in particular where there's declines, I can certainly provide additional details. That way I'm not just trying to do this from memory.
Our bookstore sales are off significantly due to COVID. They have been. Every, every school is. So students aren't coming to the bookstore. They're buying them online wherever they can. So that's.
Where I was going with this Chancellor, because if it's, if this is a trend, I think we should probably budget for it. And that's not a criticism, it's just an observation. And I agree with you. I mean, I went online recently to buy t-shirts for me with Lone Star College on them. And the product availability is nil. So I'm not going back, you know, to search in another month or two months to see if they might have them. If, if they're not available for me when I need them, they lose me as a customer and I'm just an average guy. And then we have, you know, the transition from hard products to digital products, students not being on campus, working remote, as you said, purchasing books anywhere that they can on the internet. I certainly don't blame them for that. But if that's a trend, then we probably ought to forecast it into our, into our budget.
Agreed.
And if I, if I might, it just occurred to me too, another significant item that's going to be under miscellaneous revenue in particular is also lease revenue from our private tenant lease. There were struggles there as well.
We, for the time being, and I agree with you over the long term, for the time being though, we're able to mitigate these losses with stimulus money. We can recover some of this. So but I agree, this is not a long, this is a longer term issue that we need to be dealing with, though, and being prepared for. Book sales were off before COVID. We had seen a steady decline in our bookstore revenue. So I agree with you that.
Yeah, and like I said, I'm not being critical at all. I want to be very clear about that. First of all, we cannot control it, so it wouldn't help to be critical. But second of all, it was just an observation because 6 million positive variance is really good. 8 million would have been fantastic. But any number above a dollar in positive variance right now in the environment that you've been operating in, that they think is extraordinary. And also have to ask forgiveness, I just noticed page number in lower right hand corner of the slide. So I pulled back that comment. Thank you.
I was going to send you a private note after the meeting and.
Well, I could say that the Jennifer screen, screen is actually up into the 21, but that'd be a poor excuse. I'm not that kind of person. I just, I just withdraw my comment. How's that?
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Any further questions or comments? Thank you, Jennifer, so much. Good, good presentation.
Thank you.
Our next slide item is suggested future agenda items. Board members, do we have any future suggest items for next month?
Madam Chair, I just wanted a clarification. Are we having two meetings in October? Is it October 7th and October 15th or am I getting something mixed up here? I know October 7th is for the tax, right?
So we, we have a meeting prior to our board meeting. Is that correct, Jennifer?
No, well, same day.
Same day, though. It's the same day.
It will be two meetings, but on the same day. So first, the public hearing at 5 o'clock. Once that public hearing concludes, you can adjourn and then start the regular board meeting. So yes, two, but on the same day, both October 7th.
But there's not a meeting, October the 16th, right?
No, on the 15th, I noted that date as our deadline for Lone Star College to adopt a tax rate. Just to note that in everyone's minds, that that is an important date, but we have October 7th as the date when we would have that hearing and then the board vote and hopefully adopt the tax rate.
So one meeting on the 7th, we'll start at 5 o'clock. We'll send out reminders. We will review the tax rate first and have the hearing and then we'll move into the regular meeting.
Right.
Okay, that clarifies what I was, I was just kind of confused. I thought, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, trustee Pierce. Any further comments or future agenda items?
Hearing none. It is. But it is 6:58. So I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.